Meeting called to order at 6:35. Are you gonna take notes Heather, till she gets here?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, so in attendance, Arden Staff, Heather Amanda, Jason Wheeler, and Wendy Johnson. Absent, Dan Uig, Stephanie G., and Barbara Russman. No guests today. Dan, uh, Jack Kings here. Motion to approve meeting minutes from September meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Financial status update, Jack?
I handed out an updated spreadsheet. I'd like to go over it in detail. Let me know where we stand. Getting into Trail of Treats.
That is a little bit small, but, um, put it up on, uh, overhead here and let me take a look at it. Let's see, maybe, maybe we can. Alright, where's my... Okay. Can kinda see that on there. I'm gonna read off the other one, but, uh, I can zoom in a little bit better on things. You go down the Fall Festival column, uh, we see that we paid Adam, the, the train guy. Any issues with him this year? Anybody have any issues?
No, I mean, I, you know, I'm the one that placed him. I didn't, he wanted to take a little bit more space than what he needed. And I truncated him on that right side, which, it seemed to work fine for him.
Yeah.
I mean, it, so, but no, he wasn't...
Okay.
He wasn't, yeah, it was better than usual.
Okay. So, that's the fourteen hundred we see right there. Bond Journey, I think, was, uh, um, a good choice. There's three thousand there. We have the, um, Dragonfly balloons. Odd situation with them, they asked to pick up their check on Thursday night. And, uh, that prompted me to come back down and, and get their check for them. Uh, this was agreed to by one of the board members and them. But I was the last one to, to know about it. So, um, they were taken care of, I think they did a fine job, uh, once they got going. They were here the entire weekend. The Zune ponies, the tattoos, Rockwall, I think everything worked out. You can see everything broken down there. Where we stand, um, I, I did have to bring in Always Safe to handle the parking. Parking was, uh, a challenge over in the Sirensia lot. We were supposed to have, uh, two coaches with, uh, several members of the football team. Managed that, uh, both at the Cecil Winter Media School, uh, and also over there, they didn't come, so...
Did you even hear from them?
No. So, um, the, it turned out Sunday I was over there at ten o'clock and started, uh, parking people until, um, the Cecil Township Police got over there. Once we got them started, it was pretty self-explanatory, but, uh, Saturday was just general chaos. So that's what, uh, we heard about, that's one of the reasons for the long traffic jams. Of course, we didn't, um, we didn't really have the people that we had. We didn't have the people on Sunday that we had on Saturday. So, um, still, you know, we, we managed to get through it. There was some concern about Always Safe donating everything because it's election year and that type of thing. And obviously, they billed us for that. And I think that's, uh, money well spent, since none of us could dedicate our time over there to, to manage the traffic. Where we are right now, uh, if you'll notice, I did give you the, uh, festival report. Everybody have this? If you take a look at it, um, the festival report raffle and the fifty-fifty. Total income this year, three thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars. That's the best of all the years that Carol and Teresa have been doing it. Once that's added in, that puts us, uh, positive by three thousand five hundred and thirty dollars. So, um, even with the fifty... Let's see. Concession stand, um, netted... Let me make sure, that concession stand we, we took in, um, should've been about fifty... I have fifty-nine on there, but I have expenses backed out, so, um, total, total, uh, income for the concession stand was fifty-six ninety. Any questions on that?
How many people do you think we had come through the park?
I wanna say there was at least... Tell you what, I have a bottle of water unopened on my desk, if you want it.
Sorry, Jack, I have to do that.
It's alright. I believe it's back there. If not, I don't know what I'm gonna do. There were at least four thousand coming, come through on Saturday. Uh, we figured about twenty-five hundred to three thousand on Sunday, so...
Think that's it?
Yeah. Yeah, based on, uh, the number of parked cars and, and, um, you know, pretty much what we saw coming through as far as, um, people from both ends. Yeah, Saturday, Saturday was just, just incredible.
Cause like, I know I, I drove up, uh, a guy that had hip surgery up to the intermediate school.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Up that road, packed, all the way up that road.
Okay. Four thousand, that's a guesstimate, but, um...
Yeah, I don't know how you attract that if I...
Yeah.
Tickets, but I mean, I would just...
Well, that's the thing, I mean, that, that's, that's a guesstimate based on what the police thought.
Yeah.
And that type of thing. So, we're on, we're on camera, so we can't do anything.
People are on camera. Still on camera.
Yeah, had someone say they were watching us on the thing the other day at the, uh, on Monday when we were here. I saw you, huh, huh, turn around like...
You?
Yeah.
You sat there?
We were on the camera for the meeting.
Why can't you see all of them?
She gave an amazing speech.
Where's she at, Jack, that beat? Where's, where's she at?
She was, she was dancing, she had...
Nah, I'm just messing with you. If we did exit stage right, soon as, uh...
Oh, yeah. As soon as we were done, when they were like going into real business, we're like, bye.
Firemen, firemen, we're leaving.
He went to go get your water out of his car, Wendy. He went to get your water out of his car, he has a case in there.
Okay, I just got to drink out the fountain.
So, I ask, Gianni's ran out of those flyers a long time ago. She gave, she gave me envelope, but, uh, Wendy, she asked yesterday if you want them to put a flyer for the Trail of Treats on the pizza boxes, but I thought, cause it's still early, we could put the volunteer flyer on there.
To have a booth, that would be better, that's, we need that more.
She gave us in the...
She told me last night when I was down there, she's like, "I told Arden I have a booth."
Yeah, yeah, a table.
Yeah.
But, uh, yes, uh, I thought, I think it's closer, we can put the flyer on there.
Well, we already have a hundred and seventy signed up as of yesterday.
Okay, never, uh, no, I meant like sponsors, like tables.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's what we need more.
Anyway, she said, she gave me back the thing that is empty from the thing, cause I said, Jason said they didn't get it, you know what I mean? But, she said, we ran out of them, so, they did use them all.
I know they ran out pretty quick, cause...
They just have a table, they donate the candy that they give out. And then they have a table, and... Well, if, we can give them a table if we need, if they really need it, but it's more helpful if they can bring their own. Yeah, we give them a space.
I'll hear in the, I'll hear in the park.
Along the tra, along the sidewalk?
So...
The kids just wander around, they come up down around?
Yeah, along the, like actually inside the park, you just go down the path.
I think we had seventeen?
Seventeen or something like that last year.
Yeah, I think it might pick up this year.
I think so too.
Yeah.
So we'll get more...
We have Muse Elementary this year, we have one from Penn State EDU. Grandpa Joe does one. My family, Amy and the boys do one, and Laura, they do one. All of us do their, our own table. Who else do I have? So I've gotta put a reminder out there to get people to sign up, cause we don't have, Dan's family's doing a table. So...
Do wanna call your attention to the fact that we're now, uh, for the year, positive. So we're, we got forty-six sixty-two going into the last two events that we have, uh, coming up this year, so...
How's that compared to where we were last year after the Fall Festival?
Uh, we were, we were low last year, we were down to about fifteen hundred or so last year, going into Trail of Treats. And that's why, you know, it was a little... It was tentative going in to see, you know, what type of candy was gonna be donated versus what we were gonna provide, so... We should be good, I mean, prudence is important here, but we should be good. And, w- once, uh, Simply Christmas is laid out and see what we need there, we can use the rest of that.
Okay, I am covered for myself for Trail of Treats, I need nothing from our money. I just checked, we have two hundred and fifty chips and a hundred and sixty juices. So that will cover somebody, uh, unless we wanna buy enough chips to cover somebody and enough additional juices, and that'll take care of two of our tables.
Yeah, they're not that expensive, those boxes are not that expensive that we could do more chips like the Fritos or the Doritos that we actually used for, um, walking tacos. Uh, if you want a mixed combination, they're similar, similar costs. I mean, you know, big fifty, I think we can get for like thirty bucks, you know, so...
Dan said he prefers to give out something that's not candy.
Okay.
So he's already asked to have something that's not candy.
Okay.
So, um, if you guys know what you want. Like I said, I'm covered already.
Yeah. And keep in mind, we have, I mean, um, we have donations for that. I believe we've got fifteen hundred, um, who is that, from Range, fifteen hundred from Range? Yep, and then we have, uh, a hundred from Billy Ann's, cause I just took hers and divided it up. She'll probably giving, be giving us even more. And we got a hundred and seventy-five from Always, Always Safe.
She, she'd probably do a table too, right, Billy Ann?
Yeah, she'll do it.
Those little gummy, uh, hot dogs and hamburgers and stuff like that, where do we get that from?
Grandpa Joe's.
Grandpa Joe's.
Oh, I gotta ask him for his Halloween list.
Oh, yeah, and Penny.
Yeah, I gotta ask him for his Halloween list, okay, I'll get that out. Thanks for reminding me of that.
Sure.
So, um, we don't have a lot of donations for Simply Christmas, but, you know, being the first time, um, you know, we can figure it out. You know, if we have to ask for more, more money, I, I, you know, considering, you know, what we've been able to do with what we have, I mean, this, this right here is an argument for not giving it one big pot of money for the entire year. This way, we can keep looking ahead from a budgeting standpoint of view. So, you know, if that issue comes up again, which I'm sure it will, um, I'll strongly recommend that we don't. Maybe we can refine the sponsorship letter just a little bit.
Absolutely, we, we need to do that.
But, um, you know, o- other than that, I mean, people, you know, people know what we do, we do it pretty well, so, um, you know, if they wanna be a part of that, you know, they can jump on board, so...
Man, I don't think for Christmas it should take that much, that much money. I mean, for what's, I mean, I mean, probably hot chocolate, right, something?
Well, and that's, I think, I don't know, Heather, are you coordinating that, or? Yeah. I mean, there was some discussion last time, and it's like, okay, yeah, they're all great ideas, but let's, you know, even, even if we do something different next year, let's try something this year and see how it goes, you know, so... When you start a tradition...
I figure it's common, even having like, just having Santa and Generations or something?
Can we open the concession stand, have hot chocolate, things like that, and then have like, somebody singing carols on the stage or something, like Cana Mac Band or something, I don't know.
Horse or something.
Something, that they can sing carols and, we can come up with something, I mean, but we can do hot chocolate and stuff out of the concession stand, I don't know.
Yeah, wanna be turned off out there.
Yeah. That's one of the problems.
Can we even do it in Generations, Jack, is that an option? Or not?
Um, yeah, we just have to make sure we sign it out.
Yeah, make sure it's available or whatever.
Right, um, the water does go off, uh, probably first sign of frost. So that'll probably be, you know, right after...
Next week?
Yeah, right after, uh, Trail of Treats.
I think this weekend is going below, I mean, the wind, they said with the wind it's gonna go below freezing.
Linted.
I think this weekend.
Yeah.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
Can you imagine, I mean, how lucky are we?
I know.
To pull that, that event off.
Yeah, cause Adrian Professor isn't gonna be so lucky this weekend.
I mean, the bottom's falling, I was, I mean, the highs, low fifties.
Yeah, but it was the last nice day.
Okay, so...
Okay. Any questions?
Back to the thing and the, where we ended up. Like I said, we know we don't wanna do the axe throwing next year. And I'm gonna get in touch with, um, the Army Corps early and try to get that on their schedule, so there's no question about us being able to get their rock climbing wall.
Did you get his card by chance? Okay.
Yeah.
Let's go through him, because he seems to be a recruiter, he's, he's young enough so that he'll probably be out there for a while.
Actually, he took my phone and put his contact information in my phone.
Okay.
And Touch a Truck too, we use them for Touch a Truck.
We talked about that, I said, you know, Coast Guard says, oh yeah, we're gonna bring this, you know, raft over, or this boat over, and then last minute they cancel. I said, we've only had him once in the five years I've been doing it, so...
Well, I had that guy last year supposed to come. They never showed up.
Never showed, yeah. Yeah, and actually at Oktoberfest for, for, um, Touch a Truck, I finally got the owner's name of the security company, like I got his business card, cause I went up to him and said, "We've been trying to get you," he goes, "You've been talking to my son, haven't you?" And I said, "Yeah," and he said, "Call me." So he gave me his card too. So, I mean, starting the first year, um, I wanna go over the sponsored letter with you guys, change the sponsored letter. Get that out early, get the things out early for, um, Fall Festival. Most vendors said they did good, especially good on Saturday. Sunday, they didn't have as good a day, but we didn't have as many people through, and that's always gonna happen when we're up against a Steeler game.
Uh, yeah, I, I mean, that's...
Even with Bond Journey.
Unfortunately, even if they win or lose, people are still gonna stay home to watch the game, so...
Well, you know who, um, who did not do well because she didn't bring the alpacas?
Yeah, I think it hurts her not having them.
I mean, that was completely obvi, I mean, like, yeah, she said, "I didn't do well at all," and I thought that those alpacas, people can look at, you know, I mean, it's a draw, and...
Yeah.
But yeah, everybody else I talked to was like, "Great, great." You know, once they were settled in their spots and everything was okay, they were coming over and...
Yeah, I honestly, myself, heard no grumbling from any vendor, after they were set in and going.
At first.
They all said they did well, so... Even the ones that were stuck down, down, I mean...
Yes.
Central Alliance, they had a thousand cookies decorated. She said they've never gone through that many cookies.
That was Linda, yeah, Linda, Linda's known me since I was born, so, I mean, I've, that's how, you know, relationship I have with that family. I did address, address an issue with them. They did not wanna be over on the other side. I called Pastor John, left a message, he did not call me back. And I'll be honest with you, they were, and I'm going on video saying this, they were rude. And I was surprised, you know, and they apologized afterwards. And I said, I said, "You guys, I, have I ever not fixed anything?" You know, put them in a, probably one of the prime spots, uh, and they did exceptionally well. We did have another situation with, uh, I heard on, from, from two sides, and there's confirmation, this lady was belligerent to not only Jason, but also the police and others, because she parked in the wrong place. You know, and that's not my fault, but we had to move that car. Gary may have been a little bit brusque or a little, um, you know, anxious to get the message out, but, um, the reaction was uncalled for. And, um, right or wrong, you know, we gotta do what we gotta do, alright? So I heard from both, um, both of her employers that, um, it was, it was eighty-five fifteen as far as blaming, and the fifteen was on us. So, I took responsibility for it, I apologized to everybody involved and thanked her for moving her car, um, and left it at that, so... Yeah, we...
Next year, we definitely, we all agree that there's, we have to have some additional signage places.
Yeah. But I am gonna hire, I already told, uh, Always Safe that I am gonna hire them for traffic control. I said, because at one point, it was reported that the traffic, uh, on Route, uh, well, Miller's Run was down to the split at fifty. And then...
Put her down into Bridgeville?
No, just down...
Down to Billy Ann's.
Wendy said she could sit in the car and look over, and Billy Ann's was right there.
Yeah.
That's where their car was sitting, when to get into that.
One guy from Always Safe, that was, when it came Saturday, when I went back down, I was down there for a while trying to, trying to get, and it was out of control.
Yeah.
When they finally got there, he goes, "Dude," he goes, "You need shuttle buses." He goes, he said, "I'm seeing these buses leave with two people on them," he goes, "It's harder to turn them around."
Well, yeah.
And I was, I'm just, I'm just comment that he said to me.
Yeah.
Just the size of them, it's hard to turn and so forth.
And what the intention was, they were supposed to drive into the stone lot, alright?
Make a circle.
And, and, and leave, pick up everybody, and Sunday, that's exactly what they did, alright? But, when it's Always Safe, now these guys came from Union Town, okay? So, when they got there, they said, "What do we need to do?" I said, "Once these cars leave, don't let any more go over there, let the buses come in and turn around." And, you know, even the police reinforced that. Did that happen? I'm not sure, I left over there.
Yeah, I mean, there was a time Saturday where I had Cody, Clumpie, actually, I'm like, "Cody, you got..." I had him stop it, I said, "We can't pull the buses in, they, they have to load on and off of, on fifty."
Yeah.
I said, "Do, do, I go to Ridgewood, make a U-turn, and come back." Cause we literally had to stop parking in the lot.
Well, what they've been, they were doing is just pulling up back and, and, and Clumpie was, you know, there and facilitating it. That's why it was backed up so far, you know? Yeah, I take responsibility for the parking, you know? It's, um, more of an issue is when, um, somebody tells you they're gonna be there, you expect them to be there. I, I found out late, that's why I was over there early Sunday, you know? And that's where I spent probably the first hour of, uh, Sunday was lining cars up. Once I got them going, that's fine, but that was just me. Once the police got there, they reinforced everything, and it was, it, it worked out fine, so...
I had vendors tell me that coming in, they said, "This is much more organized coming into here than it was at Oktoberfest."
Yeah.
I don't know.
Well, I, I heard the same comment, they said it was, everything was well put together, from, I heard, from vendors told me that.
Yeah.
So...
And that's, that's because of you guys. You know, and that's, that's what, you, you, you guys need to be taking credit for all that, cause that's what you're tasked with, and that's what you did. And, you know, this was the best one, the question is, how do we top it next year? And that's what we gotta come up with between now and, and, you know, and next year, is how do we make it better?
I mean, we, honestly, we could've had a hundred and seventy-five vendors if we wanted.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I mean...
Absolutely. You know, um, how do we push them?
They're already sending, like, you know, okay, when, when do we get the discounts, and I'm like, let's get through this.
You know, while, while the soil was fertile, so to speak, one of the things we were talking about in, uh, just bandering around, what if we do to get the zip line, and what if we do go over the stream and, you know, start segueing over, you know, across there? I mean, that's a five thousand pound bridge over there, uh, down by, um, Pavilion Three. I'm not suggesting everybody drive over there, but, I mean, if we start the, uh, zip line on one side and they end up on the other, they gotta walk back through, you know, or meet their parents at the other side, you know, so...
That's five or ten thousand pound, Jack?
That's five.
I thought somebody from Public Works told me it was ten.
No.
Over the weekend.
No.
Okay.
Five thousand is what Bill said, that's why the, uh, fork, you know, the bobcat can go over it. Actually, uh, um, Joe Praterati used, uh, drove his truck over it with no problem. But, uh, I don't wanna put too much more on it than that.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we'll be putting, I told Wendy's that if they come back next year, which they wanna do, and they wanna do both days, that we'll put them on the side with the kids too.
Okay.
Who?
Hmm? Wendy's.
Oh.
Heather, you're not saying much?
Speaking of all that? I thought it was impressive, I mean, seeing it from your side, as a friend, always being a guest here, I mean, making guys pull out is just amazing. I had a couple of problems with some people there, but just sat back and looked at it, that was a engaging event. I walked around, tried a couple of going at lunch and stuff like that, and everybody was... Everybody was profitable, everything was good, I mean...
Yeah.
There were little fishy with pumpkins and kids smashing, but I'm not really hearing any major problems or...
Yeah, there were enough for everybody, yeah, some of them weren't clean, some of them were clean, I understand that. I mean, we, they were all donated, okay? Every single one, we, we didn't pay dime one for any of them. Go ahead.
How do you go clean eighteen hundred pumpkins?
Yeah.
You clean them, clean them as you pull them out, there was enough towels there.
There's, that, that's a job as a parent, to wipe your own, own pumpkin off.
Well, the six that I saw walking up, you know, by us.
Oh, no.
They were, they still had mud on, so there was no intention of painting those things, you know? But there, when I, when I was cleaning up around eight-thirty, uh, Sunday night, I saw enough hand towels, you know, and actual bath towels there, that somebody could've just cleaned it off, alright? I don't think that they're gonna come out of Shifoni's Fields, you know, get, get a little, uh, spray bath or something like that, you know, a little freshening up, and, you know, and come down. They just put them in there, we, we asked for pumpkins, they said, "Here they are."
I don't expect them to by any means.
What's that?
I don't expect them to clean them by any means.
Like Lincoln went over, right?
Yeah.
I took, I, I think, he was here for probably an hour and a half, two hours, I think I went and spent twenty-five, thirty minutes with him. He wanna go paint, I went over, I took a pumpkin out, I wiped my own kid's pumpkin off. Here you go, dude.
Well, there's a water source right there.
Yeah, I took it over, opened the pump up, I went, shh, I wiped it, that was it.
You know, we could've put a hose on there, I know that, and, you know, that's hindsight, that's something I can do next time.
That's actually a cute idea. Get it like a little trough kind of thing.
Bather your pumpkin, yeah, bathe your pumpkin.
Yeah, that's actually, that's actually a cute idea.
What we're faced with now is there's a lot of pumpkins sitting over there that are just, you know, they're gonna melt down.
They still sitting over there?
Yeah.
I'm surprised there weren't more down.
Heck, Lincoln started getting soft like in one day, like the sun hitting it outside.
Yeah.
Just got soft.
Huh.
Really?
Yeah, I was like...
I need some for my front porch, but...
We'll probably, uh, throw those ones out, you know, we'll get rid of them, because the idea was, A, take them down to the, uh, concession stand, set them outside, or put them inside. If we put them inside, then that would attract all sorts of, you know, things we don't want inside, they...
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's enough.
So we decided to leave them over there since they were on plastic, and...
Is there a ton over there, Jack?
Um, there's a good number, I mean, there's a picture. I'll, I'll send you the picture of it.
Oh, the same one that's on Facebook?
Yeah, yeah, that's, uh, there's a good number, I'd say at least twenty-five, thirty, sitting there maybe more. Yeah, yeah, we could, the question is, are they gonna survive?
Are they gonna last that long?
Yeah.
Are they getting, are they already, are they getting soft over there too?
I haven't checked, I will check, uh, I'm gonna walk over there to...
Yeah, for, if you can make them last, for Trail of Treats, that'd be fine.
That'd be good.
Yeah, that's actually, yeah.
Okay.
So, like I said, Trail of Treats, I think Lawrence Fire Department's gonna do a table. So I'll get that posted again and see where we stand and let you know how many... I meant to look today to see how many kids are signed up already, so... So if everybody could let us know what you'd like for your table, I know Heather isn't gonna be here, her daughter has something.
Can I place an order through you for Grandpa, for that hot dog?
Yeah, let me get, yeah, that's what you wanna do? So Arden wants the... Oh, that goes with your costume, yeah.
What's your costume?
Oh, nevermind, I'll tell you later.
Lincoln calls them Krabby Patties, from Mike SpongeBob, he likes those little hamburgers, yeah.
Alright.
Yeah, I wanna definitely...
So I'll get that from him tomorrow.
I'm gonna reach out to, what if Lagone, that would do a table?
That'd be nice.
I'll call him tomorrow.
There's so many like big families, like in Cecil, or, like, I think if you just said, hey, we, you know, they, that's really... There's no cost for the table, right?
You said Billy Ann's doing one, or no? You say Bill?
Did, uh, did anybody talk to Billy Ann?
I can, I don't know if she said anything.
I mean, I, I just brought it up to Gianni's, and they were like, "Sure," like, that, that was just that easy, you know what I mean? You just gotta tell them.
Well, yeah, she's, she said she doesn't plan to open up down there till four o'clock.
Well, her husband said no, but she's gonna, it's bear season.
He's gonna be bear hunting, he can be around anyways. So, Amy said she'll be down, so...
Yeah, feel check with Billy Ann then.
I can do, I'll do that. I can do, I'll do that.
Okay.
Do you wanna do anything unique with, uh, Trail of Treats? Like, you know, uh, a tunnel where they walk through or, you know, um, anything like that where.
Did we have balloons for that last year? Is that what Dan got the balloons for, or was that for something else?
I thought, oh.
That Easter?
That was Easter that I remember. That's the only time I remember balloons.
I could bring my.
I saw the Boy Scouts down in Oakdale building the, you know, the little hallway right there, the thing goes in. It's kind of a good idea, actually.
Machines, I got all that junk.
Now, what I would like to do this year is, honestly, we should not all be gathered in that same area. We should, cause if you think about it, last year, we had some, a couple of tables, and then there was nobody, and then there was Grandpa Joe's and all of us.
I need electric, but.
And I'd like, like, all of us to.
Be spread out throughout it.
Spread out, yeah, so.
We want the dragon again.
Oh, yeah.
It's the only time I pulled out the egg.
Yeah, everybody loves the dragon.
Sure.
Wendy, I don't mean to break the agenda, but, um, who, who's gonna be borrowing that, um, Paw Patrol? And when does she want?
Um, Lori Beth Mar, uh, with Lawrence Fire Department.
Okay, all right, cause I haven't heard from her since the first time, so.
Yeah.
No big deal.
Um, I'll message her and ask her when she's gonna get it. I could have taken it tonight.
Yeah, whenever.
Yeah, they're borrowing our Paw Patrol. Okay, uh, lights, we're scheduled to put those up on November fourth. They're not gonna get lit up then, but we all wanted to do it before it got way cold.
That's for sure, that day.
Yeah.
I fly in that morning.
So we're all still good with that?
Yep.
Okay, so Christmas, from what I understand, um, there was some talk about really keeping things simple and doing a breakfast with Santa in Generations.
I love the Generations idea. Inside, if we can get carolers in there, Santa Claus in there, you know what I mean, we can kinda, you know, I just think it'd be great.
What?
He knows what I'm talking about.
Oh, Santa Claus.
Hey, Santa Claus is coming back to town on December second, too.
He could even like ride in on a fire truck, wouldn't, and everybody can run, you know, and come in, I don't know, I just think.
When is Cecil doing theirs, though? We can't do the same.
December second. It's always the first Saturday in December.
Well, make sure you drive up this hill this year. Left me hanging.
I know, I know, that was.
Standing there with Lincoln and they didn't come?
I was like, I was like, Link, they'll be coming. The fire truck, I'm like.
Daddy fell through.
I remember that.
We didn't even make it up there with the Easter buddy, we didn't make it up to Ridgewood.
I think, I think Generation would be a good, in case the weather is bad. It's cold, it's a blizzard.
Decorate it and put trees up.
Yeah.
Especially if people have young ones, and if it's, say it's ten below, they're not gonna have their three-year-old run around out, you mean?
We have those artificial trees, we could decorate them all, make it look really nice, I think.
Yeah, we're down. How many artificial trees did we give away?
Um, almost all of them. I think we have two.
Oh, really?
Oh, we gave almost all of them away?
Yeah.
I know we gave cans for old fashioned.
We did?
But, yeah, but, I mean, still, that's fine, you know, we could do like two right outside Generations on each side or something like that as they come in.
Mm-hmm.
I'll be honest, if, after decorating last year, I discovered I cannot be outside like that. My hands and my toes are, you know, diabetic. I can't do it.
Yeah, you're on the circulation, yeah.
So, you know, if we did something in Generations, I could do that, like, you know?
I think overall, just with.
I have the.
Cause you don't know what kind of weather you're gonna get.
I have the Santa Claus, like the dragon, but I have the Santa Claus that, you know, moves around him, and so we can put that up in front, you know, and just plug it in.
And like, we could, we could really extend into this room, couldn't we, Jack?
Oh, yeah.
They eat in there, and then, you know, like, the trees could even, you know, I mean, there's things we could do in this room.
Oh, yeah.
Cause we had the, uh, magician guy here for Easter, the one year.
Good idea.
Oh, yeah, they had Easter in here.
Yeah.
And they had the Easter gone over there.
Can we get an elf costume in his size?
Easily.
Along.
Can the kids do some kind of craft and they can decorate the trees?
Decorate ornament?
That's a great idea.
Dan's been, uh, going for that for, you know, that they decorate an ornament and put it on the trees.
Yeah.
They're very inexpensive, that's, uh, the blank ones, we, we looked at those, it was real cheap, fine by the case.
Okay, so Heather, can you write up a, uh, something as a plan? Yes.
I mean, if we pick, if we pick.
Pancakes.
If we pick a day right now, that way we can get, clear it with Teresa, make sure that it's ours.
Yeah, we would have to do that.
Jeff, what's, Jeff, what's the, um, um, capacity over there? Two something?
Uh, over there?
Yeah.
Um, let's see, I think it's two thirty-eight in this room, so it should be about.
Probably roughly the same.
Yeah, about two, I was gonna say two fifty over there.
Okay, I was just wondering.
Yeah.
I mean, one time we talked about trail, trailer, giving them an ornament to take home to decorate and then bring back, cause we could do that.
I, I don't see, I know me, I'm gonna lose the darn thing and then come back.
Yeah.
I care to you.
See, I just, I, I really like that decorating the Christmas tree idea, you know, I mean, that's, that's old fashioned. That's, you know, simply, I mean, who does that anymore, you know?
What, the one in the park?
Oh, the one in the park, yeah, we, I mean, we do that, and that's, that's what we're gonna do when we say November fourth.
Yeah.
Okay, um, and then you plug it in, but I mean, in, inside here. Cause, I mean, supervisors, if kids did that in here, they'd keep this, they'd keep it lit until New Year's, you know? Or till their first meeting in, in, in January, so. It'd be on every, it'd be on every video, you know, every, everything I record in here, it'd be on it. I mean, it, it'd be awesome. I'd, I'd put a picture on the, on the main page, uh, you know, our webpage. That's a great idea.
Yeah, I like that too. I think that's good, good argument.
Mm-hmm.
So breakfast, um, they decorate an ornament, put it on the tree. Um, do we want to try to have, um, like a magician? Or no?
How expensive is Dragonfly to have like princesses and stuff here?
Who'd we have?
Magician at Christmas. Yeah, I remember the magician.
I know I have it in my old records.
Um, one of my fraternity brothers started a party company, magicians, everything under the sun. I wanted you to look at it.
So he's local?
Pardon me?
He's local?
I'm not sure where is that, I, I, I'll send you the thing, I want you to look at it, cause he does everything.
What fraternity were you in?
Crazy, Mike Gelati.
What?
Mike Gelati.
No, fraternity, what fraternity were you in?
Oh, Sigma Nu.
You were Sigma?
Yeah. Goes, huh, they were different every, uh, you know.
Yeah, I was, I was, uh, college advisor for Sigma at Westminster.
Oh, jeez, I gotta thank Westminster.
Yeah, Sadie, what do you wanna do?
I mean, can we spend some money on that, this?
I'd rather it be something other than candy canes, cause everybody does candy canes.
Yeah, um, I tell you what, as, as often as I am that person you mentioned.
Yeah, as that person.
Am I gonna be the Easter bunny?
I'm that person. Um, I, I don't tend to give out anything. Um, I got my hands full holding kids, you know, and that type of thing.
Well, your elf that's with you.
Yeah, everybody.
And, you know, elves, you don't usually have hair, you know, and they got them little ears.
Get him a wig.
Buy the costume, I'll do it. I, I, I got no shame.
You got, all right, dude, you gotta wear the things that roll up and.
I don't care, I'll wear them.
Okay, we, this is on video, did everybody hear that?
You provide it, I'll, I'll, I'll throw it on.
Okay.
Usually it's like a bag of something, you know? Um, if I do it down in Cecil Three, they have bags for everybody that comes up. Um, or, you know, something that's, that they just hand them, you know? Um, and it, it seems like the bag's better because they can put whatever they, they have in it and, and be on their way. Of course, sometimes it doesn't make it to the end of the, out the door, but, you know, it's a nice idea. Um, if we have, you know, I don't wanna throw a range in there, but if we have extra range bags, you know, that would be good.
I mean, would Goodwill do books again?
Yeah, they're really big.
Yeah.
They're kinda thinking of like a bag you could get to Dennis, right?
Yeah, a little one.
Yeah.
A little bag, you know, but depends on what you wanna put in there, you know?
Would Salvation Army do books again, like, you know?
They might, I can ask them.
Maybe, Christmas.
See, here, here's the other thing, we've got, we've got, uh, Toys for Tots, um, that's Mark Socrates', you know, pet. I mean, he has done that year after year after year. He does a great job on that. Toys come in from all over the place. Last year, we had a crossover, all right, similar to what we had at Easter, you know? I was Santa Claus, um, for them in the morning, and then them in the afternoon. And I tell you what, that was a long day. That was a real long day, right? Um, and that's.
Doing his?
Um, I gotta find out the date, but it's gonna be close to the second, I mean, it may be December second. Um, and that's, I mean, you know, they've been, I don't wanna be the one that's torn in between the two. I like them both. Um, but I just wanna, I just want you guys to steer clear of, uh, I don't wanna, I don't wanna do another Easter situation, you know? And it, again, it, the recommendation to do it in the afternoon came from Public Works, not from anybody else, and there was nobody's intention to shift things or anything like that. Their recommendation, the strong recommendation came from, uh, the staff here that you don't wanna mess with the, the people fishing, you know, uh, opening day of fishing, so.
So when is the opening day of fishing?
I didn't hear you, what? Opening day? That was, uh, opening day was.
That was Easter, though.
Yeah, that was Easter, okay? What I'm saying is I wanna avoid a situation like we had at Easter, you know? So, um, whatever we do, let's do it, you know, opposite from not only toys, uh, Toys for Tots, but also Cecil Three.
Uh, side note, when I was in my booth, it wasn't Ruthie, it was someone else from Auxiliary came up and, and gave me the, um, you know, about their craft show that they're gonna be doing, and I told her who, you know, I said, uh, about the Easter month. She said, you did a great job, oh my God, blah, blah, blah. And she goes, you know, we love the fact that you guys are, we're like merging sort of kind of different activities, you know, she goes, we all gotta work together, we're all in the same community, and I agree, you know, so.
Yeah, Ruthie's, I mean, they, they do a, they do a great work down there. Women's Auxiliary and, and, I mean, they've got something, they've got a Halloween dance coming up, they've got, uh, Halloween Bingo, you know? This is, this is what they used to do, aside from the carnival and the annual parade. Uh, Women's Auxiliary was always doing something down to, at, down to Far Hall. And, you know, I swing by, you know, even if you don't stay the whole time, just stop in. Um, it's getting back to the way it used to be, which is great to see.
Okay, so our tentative scheduled date is December ninth.
Okay.
Okay.
So you, as of right now, we don't know that it would conflict, right?
Right, I gotta check with Mark to make sure, but.
Okay.
I'd rip, check with Teresa.
Check, see if we can get the.
Generations, yeah.
And can we use this room in conjunction with that?
Um, okay, we said what date? December?
Ninth.
Ninth?
Ninth, okay.
Did you say breakfast?
So, Arden, you're going to check into your friend's business?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, yeah.
And I'll look up and see who the magician was, cause I don't know if he ever came back into doing it, cause remember, COVID is what killed it.
Yeah.
So, real quick, if we do breakfast, we'll need.
Yeah, that's, that was my question. Is it gonna be a breakfast thing?
Honestly, I'll make them, I don't care.
Well, see, that's a, that's a good point. I mean, do we wanna do that? Um, you, we can use the kitchen now, all right? Prior to the current regime, prior to Kimmy, you know, you had Kimmy who was, uh, booth eleven down here, not far. She's the one that actually cooks in there. She lets people use the kitchen the way it should be, you know? As long as we clean up after it, she's not gonna have a problem with it, so.
I mean, pancakes are.
Yeah.
They don't make them, I mean, I've seen.
Pancakes, uh, you know, do you wanna do, uh, scrambled eggs and bacon too? I mean, or, you know, toast, and what else?
Isn't sausage easier than bacon?
I'll get Billy Ann's cook.
Well, you know, and that's the other thing, do you wanna hire, hire a cook for, you know, how many hours?
Well, I, I mean, hon- honestly, Jack, I'll make the pancakes up.
Yeah, I know.
If you wanna get like a vat of eggs or bacon or sausage made.
Yeah.
Maybe she'll throw us a deal, maybe.
I was gonna think that, so I was gonna.
You mean to get like the serving pans?
Yeah. Okay, and we got till what, December ninth for that?
Yeah.
Yeah, let me talk.
I don't know what, I don't know how big of a, I mean, I'll gladly cook it all. I, I like cooking, I don't bother me, but it's. I, I don't know if there's enough area in there to make all that all at once.
Oh, yeah, there is.
Oh, there is?
There is, yeah, cause if you, uh, if you go down the hallway and you make the, right before you go in the main room, um, you got that whole area there, but you go behind and there's, uh, three freezers, a refrigerator, a big gassed, uh, countertop. Um, there's plenty of room to work.
Like a flat cooktop?
Yeah. Yeah, and stove too, I mean, there's, there's a gas stove in there. Um, so there's plenty of, plenty of room to operate in there.
Do you think Gianni's will put the flyers on the pizza boxes again, that's something we can help advertise it?
Oh, yeah, they'd do it. I guarantee it. Amy will do it. I don't see a problem with that.
I thought of, I mean, just the way Wendy, if, my kids been out of the elementary school, they always used to do a Friday folder. All the kids, parents came home every Friday.
Oh, neat.
Print the advertisements out, and get them up to Hills Hendersonville or the Lee's Elementary. Folders, just to help advertise it.
Oh, the good old folders. I know, I know, oh, yeah, I know all about it this year. I gotta make sure it gets a sticker and, oh, yeah.
Well, you know what, that's another way to interact with kids. You know, uh, like in South Africa and other places, parents have to still sign the homework when the kids are done. That's the only way kids can get into class the next day. I mean, that, we're, we're a long way from that, but that, that would be, that would be education right there, sorry. I aggress a little.
I, there's times when Lincoln brought stuff home, and I made him do it, these were, only been at school a month. I'll actually sign my name.
Good.
To show that he's.
Good.
He did it.
Good.
And I'll stick it back in his form.
Good. I like it, sorry.
Is there enough paint left over from the pumpkins to do the ornaments?
I think Barb, I think Barb might know that more. Barbara's stuff, I think. Cause I, I remember a text going by Sunday about the paint, and, um, there's still, there's still a good bit of paint left.
Okay. Um, ornaments, um, Oriental Trading? Uh, compare them to Amazon, okay? And then, um, maybe look for some little thing to give out, like, we have a bunch of crayons over there that we have left over from Easter. And then, um, maybe look for some little thing to give out, like, we have a bunch of crayons over there that we have left over from Easter. The little coloring books we have over there are Easter ones, though. Maybe look at the, um, Christmas ones. Yeah, okay.
So what do you think, I guess we gotta see what the capacity is, or we're gonna do time slots for that too? Because we'll, we don't want to extend ourselves to where that's over capacity. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
And then, I guess, limit it to that headcount for registration or whatever.
Yeah, how many we can do. Sign up Genius works great for this stuff, as you've seen from, um, Halloween. And we only pay for it for the months we use it.
Okay.
Yeah, so we just paid twelve dollars to use it for October, and then we can.
Yeah, I, I don't know if a time slot thing will work like it does for Halloween for that.
Yeah.
Think you have a time window, time to time.
But if we have something in here, like if we have them doing ornaments somewhere, and then have them come in here.
And extended in here, that would also help with the.
Yep.
Uh, God, capacity issues, yeah.
See, the guy we used before for the magician, he also did balloons.
That's right, that's right, now I remember that, yeah, yeah.
Now, where did we get Dragonfly then? Was he, did they step in when we couldn't get ahold of this guy?
Probably.
Yeah, okay, I remember that now.
That's when we went to Dragonfly.
Was that before I came, it was a few years ago.
Yeah.
Collectively think about Dragonfly for next year, okay, I just want you to.
What?
Just collectively think about Dragonfly for next year.
I say he messed with us twice now, and we, we look for somebody else.
Hundred percent.
There's nothing more awkward than driving up in a black truck, handing the guy in a small car a check in a parking lot with the police behind you, you know, just like.
And, you know, I, I think Stephanie's probably on the mark with that when she said that she thinks maybe he's in financial.
Yeah, I think so. Cause I'm, honestly, I'm thinking if we didn't give him that check on Thursday, so he could put it in his bank, we would not have seen him on Saturday. But, I mean, that, who knows?
What the thing is, my, I have an issue with, same thing, if I'm, if I'm getting a deck put on my house, am I gonna pay you everything in full before you, ain't gonna happen.
Good point, but the contract says fifty percent upfront, alright, and the remainder due the day of the event, alright? Not Thursday before the.
Oh, I know.
You know, I'm thinking, okay, and then, then the flip-flop, because then all of a sudden he wasn't available on Saturday, he was gonna do all day Sunday just for the money, you know? And then it was like, oh no, never mind, can we go back to what we did before? Okay, you know, um, okay. So, let's think about it, if we can get the, we can get the magician back, you know, we're back in business with him again, that'd be great. We can find him.
So I'll look at this, Arden's friend, and I'll go back and look and see who that was, and see if he's back in business. So, you're gonna look at stuff for the kids, ornaments, stuff for the kids.
What time are we thinking, like eight to eleven, twelve?
I want to say Dan found them, wasn't it on Amazon? Remember, it was like big cases of them?
But I want to, I want to compare them to Oriental Trading.
Oh yeah, Saint Joanne Fabric.
Uh, I don't know, what do you, say like, maybe nine to twelve?
Um.
Or, or is three hours too long for that?
See, that's the thing, I mean, you don't want to disappoint any kids, and let's see if he'll do nine to twelve, you know?
Okay.
And if not, make it ten, ten to twelve, you know? If he doesn't want to do nine to twelve, then ten to twelve. Or are you thinking nine to eleven?
Well, I think Heather also asked us about the event period of the time window.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry, yeah, okay, um. Breakfast was, well, obviously, that's the thing, it's not lunch with Santa.
So we could start them, what, they have to eat breakfast first, come in here, well, where, where would we put painting, I mean, we'd put plastic down.
Yeah.
But where would we do that?
You can't put that, in case it gets built on the carpet and stuff.
Yeah, and you know it's going to.
Oh, hundred percent, yeah.
I mean, we could do it over in, uh, Generations, but we'd have to tape that plastic down, so it does not move. Um, cause that's partially wood floor, and then they got the, um, the dance floor in there. Um, yeah, I mean, we could lay out those, uh, two mil thick sheets, but they're also slippery, so we have to consider that, you know, um.
I have drop clo- I have a couple of drop cloths at home, like big.
Doesn't that slip and slide?
Like big fabric ones, Jack, you know what I mean?
Comes and rolls?
Yeah, it does, but I'm saying that's real slippery to begin with.
I'm saying, I, I have a couple of big cloth drop cloths that they're not, if you tape them down, you're not gonna slip on them.
Either, either that, or put them down, put the table on top of them.
Yeah, or that, whatever, but yeah.
Yeah.
But they're not slippery like plastic is.
Now, what kind of paint is this? Is this, um, water-based paint, or is it?
Yes, water-based, like they used on the pumpkins.
Okay, so, I mean, at some point, we can clean it up with, I don't think that's gonna be an issue. I mean, that's, that's an activities room before it's anything else, you know?
And where will the tree go that, that ornaments go on?
Um.
What are they painting? Are they paint ornaments, or they, they make that?
Heck, I know our neighbor rented it out for a birthday party, and they made, she actually did a really cute job, she made, um, little like wood cutouts.
Oh neat.
And she had templates that she put on the wood.
Yeah.
And it had the kid's name, like Lincoln's, of course, is a car, she had a car for him, and then he painted it, and then he stuck it on his wall in his bedroom. It's really cute.
Nice.
But all the tables, all the kids were in there painting. So, I mean, and I helped clean up, it wasn't bad.
To answer, uh, Heather's question, my idea is when you make ornaments, you've got glue, and you put like sparkly stuff on there, you know, and paint it, color it and paint it and that type of thing. I don't know, maybe I'm old-fashioned.
No glitter.
No glitter? That's right, no glitter allowed in there, so.
Yeah, they wouldn't like clearance.
Excuse me.
I, I don't want to clean it, that's the problem.
Well, they wouldn't want it, like, if you put the tree in this room too, they're not gonna want glitter going on the carpet.
Right, right, because we're down to Rick cleaning, and that ain't gonna happen, so.
But where would you put the tree up?
Um, I'd like to, uh.
Go out there?
Yeah.
I was just gonna say that.
I'd like to have it out in the middle here.
Instead of the fancy one that Rick and them?
Yeah, um, unless we can get the tree early, um, because that's usually donated by bedners or somebody. And if we get it and then let the kids decorate it, uh, as opposed to forcing Rick to, and, you know. Just so you know, Rick, Rick has got some back issues, I mean, he, he hung in the Fall Festival, because he had, he, he goes, you know what? The only reason I'm here is I absolutely love this, and.
He scared me.
Yeah, he, he scares me too. I don't know how he's standing up right now.
I, I ran out one, at the concession stand one time to him, because I thought he was like, like that time Jim hurt his back and couldn't move.
Yeah, well, he's going through weekly, um, sessions where they're, they stretch it, and it's, it's helping.
Oh, traction.
Yeah, it's helping a lot, but it's just, you know, he overdid it last, like we all did. I mean, we, you gotta admit, we all overdid it, you know?
Like, Arden was laughing at me, because I actually had, um, Maureen do my back.
Yeah.
But she told me, she says, your back is like a board.
Yeah.
She's not much one to.
Oh, that's right, I mean, you were coming back skipping or something, I don't know, you were all happy.
Yeah, he took a picture, he shared it, didn't he?
I was at, I was at my tent like that, electronic her what.
But I think it would be nice if that's the tree out here, because then, like somebody said on Facebook, how they liked how we actually bring Cecil together as a community.
Yeah.
And having that tree decorated by the kids.
Yeah.
I think that would make a difference.
Yeah. Did that give you some idea of what we're?
What kind of nursery?
Okay, okay, because we do, we put the, uh, Christmas tree out, right out there, and, um, well, that's up from, I want to say first of December to, you know, so, I mean, we could, we could adjust it for this, that's not a problem. Um, and then it'll be there till almost like mid-January before he even takes it down. Now, that's gonna be, uh, on the main page of the, the Cecil Town, and, and our Facebook page as well. Um, from the time it goes up until, you know, mid-January, so. You know, that, I like the idea, I've liked it for a while, I think now's the year we need to make it happen, so.
Okay, anything else?
Um, are we on other items now?
Yep, other items.
I just, um, overall, and it's, overall for, um, and for the people who aren't here. Um, I've never been a part of an operation that big. Uh, I mean, I used to arrange doctoral students coming in from all, all around the world for ten days and that type of thing, but, um, this one, uh, I mean, I aged a couple of years on this, I think we all did, but, um, you know, I couldn't have asked for, uh, any more, any better help. Um, leading up to it, uh, getting it done, and it's, like, again, it's not about me, you guys did it, but from a coordination standpoint of view, we had a lot of hurdles thrown in front of us. When we almost lost that parking lot, that Sorenzia parking lot, I had to shift over to, uh, alternate parking. And then we get it back a week before, I had to shift back again, so I had to change a lot of things, I did, I did let some things fall through the cracks. Uh, I didn't get an email out to all the supervisors and, and, and that type of thing, they knew about it, but, um, you know, I just appreciate everybody's, um, hard work, hard effort, and, um, your professionalism, because, um, the more people we put in that park, the more intense it gets. Um, you know, as it gets damp at night, you know, people start getting a little, you know, they get cold and they get cranky, and I understand that, but, you know, I appreciate everybody hanging in there, um, because we had some, we had some people that were difficult to, to, to work with. But overall, um, you know, I gotta echo what Cindy said, uh, it was probably the best ever. You know, question is, how do we, how do we make it better for next year? I think we'll figure out a way to do that. But thank you for, uh, for everything, you know, to make this thing happen, I really appreciate it.
Yeah, I think it was a wise decision to do away with the fireworks.
Yeah.
I think that was definitely in our favor, um, overall.
One guy asked me about that, when we took the bounce houses down, his little boy was excited, he was crying, it was, it was over, it was time to go. Next year, we could do fireworks again, as you know, it has some safety issues, I said, we decided to invest the money, I completely understood or whatever, and the boy was still crying, I was like, come back next year, and that kind of helped him along, and I come back next year.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, listening kid. I'll tell you what, um, you know, I joke about Morgana's River, because for years, people from over there did not come over here. There were so many people from Lawrence over here this year. It was really surprising, and they all were so impressed that Cecil had this.
I mean, heck, there's people, I, people I came, I knew, like, A.J. Brock, does the DJ, he was here. I'm like, A.J., what are you doing here? His whole, I know him, he's a friend of mine, he's, him and his whole family is here, I've never, I've never seen him down here.
Yep.
So.
Um, one of the things I was talking about, um, Officer Odie about, uh, he was former military, former, former Marine Corps, and he said, you know, he said, he, we were talking about the whole setup and how it's organized, and how we get money and that type of stuff. He goes, you know what might be something you want to think about, he said, why don't you arrange with the fire department in Muse to send one of these buses over there every hour or so, and say, you know, uh, Muse, um, Fire Hall will be, will be the pickup and drop-off point for anybody from Muse that wants to attend the, the Fall Festival. It'll be running like on an hourly basis, where, you know, and they'll just go down there, make a right on, um, Muse Bishop Road, take them right to the, uh, um, firehouse, drop them off, pick up whoever wants to come back. I mean, if we have two of them, uh, you know, they could do it, uh, every hour, that would reduce the number of cars coming in. You know, for those that, you know, want to come, spend a little bit of time and that type of thing. And he said, you know, after a while, you could probably do it in other places too, like McDonald's, you know, and, or even further down in Cecil and that type of thing. He said, that'd be one way to control this traffic. I'm like, you know, that's absolutely genius.
That's brilliant.
Absolutely genius, so, something to think about.
And I also, you know, I told you what his, um, Jason's idea was with Billian, and I, that's a great idea too.
Oh, and I, I did, I said, I talked to her, I wanted to talk to her before I even brought it up, and she's all for it. She's like, I gotta, she said, they deliver it right to me.
What was this?
For our food now for next year.
Yeah.
Hot dogs, hamburgers, I mean, she gets, she said, I said, you know, I get, I get a nice discount, they deliver it right to me.
Yeah.
That way, we're not chasing our tail, Jack can't go into Sam's Club.
Yeah.
Or wherever it is, she shouldn't have to do that.
Right, yeah, yeah, that's a great idea, and.
I think it'd be a cost savings for us.
Yeah, and we could keep the same prices and, you know, do a little bit better.
Yeah.
Um, and keep in mind, all we're doing is plowing it back in, you know, we're, we're putting it in, we're gonna use, uh, the fifty-six hundred that we ultimately cleared. Um, you know, and, you know, we're plowing it back into, to what we're gonna do in the next two, two events. Uh, next year, we'll start with a new, new, new slate, you know, and, and, uh, look at it from a, a different angle. Everything's gonna keep going up, you know, in price, but if we can provide quality at a reasonable price, you know, people are still gonna come, but, you know, I was talking to, um, one of the, um, uh, vendors, the, the group, the, Wendy, who was it, that Frost Ferry and, and a whole bunch of them, they were all related?
Mobile Chef and Truck and Triangles.
Yeah, she's saying that, that industry standard is now sixteen dollars for a specialty burger.
Wow.
Like, I, I wouldn't pay sixteen dollars for a hamburger if my life depended on it, you know, I mean, I'm old-fashioned.
I guess you're not going to Five Guys?
Aw, man.
I just had this conversation today.
They're leaking fifty dollars.
Twenty-eight dollars, I went, hey, Kentucky Fried Chicken, thirty bucks for two people. And, and, and the, the legs, the chicken legs are like chicken wings, you know, they're little tiny things, I'm like, what the heck? They shrink the chickens or what, you know? I got to try that, uh, Matt Katak this time.
Yeah.
Amazing.
I had it at the car show at Wild Thing Stadium. I didn't have it here.
Okay.
That's when he told me he was coming.
Yeah.
It was pretty, pretty good.
Oh, I thought it was amazing.
I got his brisket, Fred, his name's Fred.
Chicken with the.
Fred, or?
The barbecue guy?
Yeah.
I went over, I said, how you guys doing? You guys doing well? And he's like, phenomenal.
Yeah.
And I was giving you brisket, he goes, I have none left. I was one thing I wanted. So I left, and then later on, I took over the one lady from, um, Auxiliary or something.
Yeah.
And then she's like, I want a funnel cake. So I drove her over, got her a funnel cake, right, he comes, he could come over to me, he goes, it's the last person I have on the whole truck.
Oh, wow.
And he gave me a container of it, and I brought it back, and me and Glenn, phenomenal.
Yeah.
Food's really good.
What did everybody think? Was that just the right amount of food trucks?
I, I think you probably put a couple more if you wanted to in the infield, because you had a pretty good gap there.
Yeah, we did, because we expected we were in there, because I had, um, I had thirteen, I had thirteen slots laid out. So I was putting, see, and, and, and that was the drawback with the G, GIS map. Um, I was getting so many ten-foot spaces up there, when I actually put it on, down, you know, on the ground, I was losing, I lost five up on the top side, I lost six down, you know, and some, and that's why we had to come up so fast with those spots next to Pavilion Two, we just kind of created those, and, um, yeah, we had a little catfight there, but, I mean, yeah, we resolved it, so. Um, it, it was, I, I think we could have put a couple more in there, that's why we put the tables in between there. I think the tables were a saving grace for anybody, uh, you know, vending food, because never did I walk by there, I didn't see, uh, just about every chair filled, you know?
What, under the tent?
Uh, under the tent, outside of the tent.
Under the tent was packed.
Yeah.
The tables too.
Now.
Saying the table, yes.
What we're gonna do is we're gonna get a bigger tent next year, okay, because you only could fit four tables under there. So we get a nice, nice hot roasting day like we had Saturday and Sunday, and more people are gonna probably want to sit longer under a tent as opposed to sitting out in that hot sun. So I talked to Behringers, and he said, yeah, we can give you like a, a twenty by forty. And, um, I said, okay, let's look into it, because, you know, we're gonna do the same tables, and we're gonna have, uh, chairs, so I'm sure, you know, I'm sure it's gonna, uh, pay for itself, that's not gonna be an issue, but, um, I mean, just about every chair was filled. I, I mean, the, the mess afterwards is what tells you, you know, that, that people were using them, because cleaning those tables was, you know, it was terrible. I mean, there, there was one bad lemonade something there, I'll tell you that much, because those, um, some of those cups, they were full. You know, even Billian said, she goes, I tried that one, I didn't like it, so we went and got this one. So there was two lemonade vendors, one, one they didn't like, and one they liked, so I don't know who was who.
Well, I, I might have one, the girl that owns Platinum, and, um, she was, she was at some big fair, so she was, I was gonna try to get her in there. And I'm, I, I like lemonade, but it ain't like my thing, it's phenomenal. So, that's an option for next year, if you want another one in there, we're.
You know, Rooster Slut, they weren't gonna come the second day, and they canceled their other event, and they're gonna come the second.
I talked to her Saturday, I said, you coming back tomorrow? And she goes, I think I am, it was between this and some other event. And, uh, because they have one truck that was broke down, and she goes, we're coming back here tomorrow.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, there was always a line there, I mean, I.
She was a really nice girl.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, I don't know about putting, uh, Zhang's next to the stage, it was kind of a last-minute move. Um, I didn't see the, the, uh, mascot table used an awful lot, you know, I saw people sitting at it, other than, but, I mean, that's fine, we can figure out.
Well, she wants to be over with the kids next year, and I, I mean, that's really where they should be.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't need a mascot table there, you know, I told her we'd put the table for her over.
Yeah. Um, I mean, other than that, I think we had a little problem, uh, just so you know, that, uh, Lawrence had to use the Jaws of Life to pull one of the pipes out of the ground, because somebody parked there and they couldn't get the fire truck out, so they pulled that out and got out, and it was just, so, you know, they were put back, um, uh, on Monday. Um, I guess the, uh, pet, petting zoo did, did well, uh, Pet Search, I didn't hear any complaints from them. Um, yeah, I, I, the only, I mean, I gotta reconfigure that section down, uh, by Pavilion Two, because that, that wasn't the best idea.
Well, the Historical Society loved having the Pavilion.
They really liked that, and, and it just makes sense, don't stick them over in the kids' zone, um, put them, and, and really, that's, if, if you want, I mean, that's where everybody merges at some point, you know, that's like the confluence of the entire festival is right there at Pavilion Two, so. That's a, that's a winning si- situation for anybody, so.
Okay, anything else?
I'm done talking now.
Okay, uh, meeting is adjourned at.
Seven thirty-nine.
Thank you. He knows I can't see.
It says seven thirty-nine on my watch. Seven thirty-nine.